Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, especially a big thank you to our panel, which we'll get to introduce you all here in just a second. But I wanted to first introduce Aaron Tomlin, our Director of Career and College Readiness. Or always known as CTE, but for those of us that don't know all the acronyms, it's Career Technical Education or Career and College Readiness. So whatever's, whatever makes people ready for after high school. And you have a presentation to go over with us.
Yeah, so a super simple one today. It's less of me talking and it's, we're gonna hear from some of the kids that are in the program, have lived the program. I'm super excited because I've talked to some of them here and there, but I'm excited to hear just more breadth. And they're from various programs. So we've got some representation of some of the programs that we don't always bring, pull out. So I'm excited to hear from them today. So yeah.
And so for those of you that don't know about how board, school boards work and everything, one of our meetings a month is a study session where we get to talk. Because according to all the laws, we can't speak as a group outside of these open public meetings. So this is our chance as a group to talk about things going on in the district. And then at our board meetings is where we do all the voting and business and everything. So it's pretty informal and so don't, don't be too stressed. I'm sure it's not, it's a little nerve wracking, but being on the spot, but we really appreciate you being here. So.
Right, well, I'll get started. So CTE ties directly in with our goal five. And so today, we're gonna kind of hear about how some of the ways that it's impacted our future and how this impacts our overall experience. And we've got seniors here that are gonna tell you a little bit. We always are continuing to follow our promise. Of course, no value in support. And I'm hoping that you'll hear some of those things come out about the special experiences they've had as they've gone through our programs and our CTSOs and our classes and all the great things. And then really goal five in our, our, our strategic plan is, is directly related to the things that CTE does. Like I take that as like, that's our personal, like, we need to lean in and we represent that as, as much as we can. That's what it's about for us. So I'm super, super happy to talk about that today. Um, we got some new courses. I just want to let you know, hey, got a couple of new courses coming. Uh, so J R T C, A S L three, Career and Life Readiness, which is a couple that you can expect. And if you go on tours with me or any other things next year, you wanna see or hear more about it, let me know and we can talk about those now. Uh, there is a QR code there that shows all the programs. But we're, I showed most of you that last time around. And if you wanna see them, uh, I can, I can share that. Let's get to the kids. Cause that's the important part today. So, uh, all right. So we have one change in here, but I'm just gonna have you go down the line. And if you can just talk about, uh, what's your name, grade, school, and like, what class are you in right now? Actually, that's our first question. So just name, grade and school. That'd be great. Get us started. Tate, you wanna start?
I'm Tate Nishman. Uh, I am a senior and I'm gonna Bonning Lake High School. Right now, CTE classes I'm in, I'm in, uh, digital photo.
Well, Daniel Laney, I'm a senior. I go to Sumner High School. I'm in business classes and then I'm also history, film and math. And I'm going to Udo.
My name is Mia Cardenas. Uh, I'm a running start student at Sumner. Uh, currently, the only CTE class I'm taking is plant sites. Uh, and then over the past couple of years, I've taken aerospace one and two. I've taken culinary and I'm also representing the FFA.
Hello, I am Katie. I'm a senior at Sumner High School. And currently, I'm taking intro to engineering design and complex aerospace.
Hi, my name is Jayden Kaler. Um, I'm a senior at Bonning Lake High School. And this year, I'm taking AP Statistics, um, yearbook, and I'm TA for Intro to Business and Marketing.
My name is Laura and I go to Bonning Lake High School with junior. Um, right now, I'm going to take biotech, biotechnology. Uh, in my sophomore year, I took addition of brain and medical science, oral online visual photography.
Impressive. Cool. So it's a lot of different classes. Yeah, wide variety. As I was introduced, I was like, man, they're, they're not just taking in one program here, but they're like, boom, boom, boom. So super cool. Yeah. All right. Let's get very much. There we go. All right. So the first one, we kind of got into a little bit was CTE classroom in or have you taken? Um, and then what kinds of things? So think of some of your, uh, you know, some of the things that you're currently doing for those either, I think you're all in the programs currently. So what's something that you've done that's recent and that you don't get to do in other classes?
Uh, yeah, like I said, I'm in digital photo right now. Uh, but pretty much a different art class or yeah, different class I've ever taken. Um, it was a good, good intro to sort of arts. Uh, but like in the past, I've taken cybersecurity. Uh, I don't actually could not remember all the CTE classes I've taken. I had to pull up my, my list, but, um, I've taken IED, right, just like the robotics one class, uh, cybersecurity, project management, data programming, a lot of different stuff. A lot of surprising things I didn't realize were, uh, CTE classes afterwards. Um, but yeah, I don't know.
All right. So, uh, I've taken animal anatomy last year. And in that class, I didn't really like animals or like barn. It was really cool, like, get a new perspective and I honestly enjoyed learning about like all the new animals. We got to see live horses in class. And then also in my personal choices class, I took that freshman year, but it was like a hands-on cooking class. And then we also had like a sewing unit and I've never like sewed anything before. So making PJs was definitely an experience. Yeah. And then lastly, I'm mostly centered in business and that's what I'm focused on. And within that, my most recent project is creating a business plan with, um, like an eco-centered business plan. So I'm doing like eco clothing. So, yeah.
Um, so my sophomore year when I took culinary, I thought it was really cool because I got my food handler's card, which I needed to work at my current job, Denny's. Um, and then in plant science, I've gotten introduced to FFA over the years when I took ag biology, my freshman year, but in plant science, I got the chance to be our greenhouse manager. That meant I was kind of running our plant sale. And my most recent project, oh, and we're also getting our OSHA certification there. So I thought that's also pretty cool. And my most recent project is my agri-science project for FFA and my employment skills competition that we just went to state for.
Um, so in the past, I've been in digital photography, nutrition and fitness, child development, intro to engineering and design, intro to programming, game design, core plus aerospace one. And I've also been a part of FFA robotic skills USA for aerospace and FCC LA. And one of my more notable things that I've done recently is I went to a manufacturing competition at Boeing. And I go on second place.
Um, but the other three that I'm taking this year, I've also taken culinary and I took personal choices as well my freshman year. Um, I feel like there's a wide variety of things that we do in each class, specifically with personal choices freshman year. Um, the financial unit really got me into business. So now I'm Bonning Lake High School's DACA president. And we just went to internationals in Florida two weekends ago. So that was a great opportunity and I don't think I would have been in that position if it wasn't for CTE.
One of the things I got to do in like addition and the brain as well as medical science, um, you get a lot more experience like as if you're in college. Um, I felt more like it was on point and targeted in classes as well as the teacher explains the things in very many details. And I felt like it was super connected to nowadays society. Um, and like activities we do is I mean, especially in addition in the brain, we learn about the drugs, how it affects the brain and why people do it and how recently dead. Um, and then from medical science, we learn the background of the history of how healthcare was performed and how it all like functioned throughout the, throughout the years. And I think those are really actually really cool. Cause I think I learned a lot more history than the history of graphics.
Related more. So, well, you guys kind of shared a little bit of this, but Laura, I'm gonna start with you down there this time. Uh, so out of all those awesome projects that you've done, what would you say is your like most favorite thing that you did in activities or projects? And why? Like what made it stand out to you?
Um, so in medical science one, uh, we did this project where we start, like in the first semester, we have to start and then it goes throughout the whole year. Uh, it's basically an investigative research where you gain up a lot of articles and you find it on websites, um, that relates to healthcare. Um, and then you read it, outline it, and then you also, if you have any questions, you ask your teachers about it to make sure you're under my test. And then you also come up with a conclusion, we come up with, uh, and then play, I mean, my response and how the world has changed from way back in like B C or D C. And I think that we even, I personally like doing research on my own because it's just a lot of fun to do research and learning a lot by yourself. Um, I think there's difference of where your teacher is teaching with the way as well as you're learning it by yourself. So when you do get to do a lot of research on your own, you also gain a lot more knowledge. Uh, because the teacher trying to put a lot of, uh, things in a short amount of time while you have the whole time to yourself, which you can do and have access a lot more. And if you get to do a lot of research on it, you get to learn a lot. And then in that project, we, uh, put those, uh, sources and articles that we read throughout. And we just make a big project of how healthcare has performed comparing from the back till now. Uh, and then how like the implications to the patients, how the world can be better if you work in it and like how you can make an impact. If you were, uh, like a doctor, like if you were being part of it, how we do things, like that kind of project. And it was actually one of my theory because I was sophomore. Uh, and then my healthcare was going in toward, or my pathway was going into medical field. So, and then gaining that a lot, I was just like, this is crazy. Like it was a new experience to me. And then with my teacher's support also is like, made me realize a lot of things.
Um, with AP Statistics, it's probably one of my favorite classes I've ever taken. Um, I wanna eventually start a career in finance and marketing analytics. So it's really awesome getting to see, um, the different like statistical projects that we do within the class. Um, continuously throughout the year, we've just done so much hands-on experience throughout the courses. And I just think it's such a unique experience because I feel like in most math classes, it's a lot of workbooks and writing assignments. But in AP Statistics, it's a lot more hands-on activities. Like one of my favorite projects we've done is we created paper airplanes and studied the statistical analysis of that. And it's just, it's very cool and it's something different, you know? And it's, I'm able to take a different perspective on the math course and the way I view math in general. And it definitely enhanced my want to study that in college as well.
Um, so mine's not really a project or an activity, but it's an event that happened in my robotics season in twenty twenty-fourth, when I had to jump in for robotics team that had all but one member left. And I had little to no robotics experience at this time, but I jumped in and spent sixteen hours straight on a bot and got it competition ready. And then went to a competition next day and won eleventh during competition, which was second overall in our school. Um, and it was stressful, but, um, just be to problem solve and learn quickly, but also believe in myself without other pressure.
Uh, my favorite, just activities and projects that we've done in plant science. We've worked really hands-on with different types of soil. We learned what causes these different types of soil and where they're at. And this really gave me just the information and all of just the want to learn about this for my agri-science project. And it, we also have to use the Morris Farms that we have in our plant science costs that are provided to us. And for my project, what it was based on, it was me altering soil pHs to mimic the, um, acts of acid rain and climate change. And I got first place for that contest. And I just really think that it's cool that we get to work hands-on with these things and we get different types of resources that you wouldn't get in any other class.
I'd say my favorite word was in my Ivy Business class this year. Uh, we planned a wedding budget and so it allowed me to be more creative and gave me more experience on the math side of things because business related, I'm not as strong in that pursuit. And also I would say allowing me to be creative and like realistic because in the real world, people can't afford everything in a wedding. So like learning how to cut certain things out and what do you need and what, what do you want? So I would say allowing me to be creative, that was my most important.
You've got how expensive they are.
Yeah. So, uh, my favorite, uh, sort of thing has, yeah, also isn't really like a project or activity. It's, uh, also the, my school's robotics team, spent a lot of time there and on it all four years. Um, uh, I guess where I actually choose the CTE class, I had a lot of fun in the, yeah, cybersecurity class. Um, yeah, I, I felt like I had a lot of, uh, freedom to explore. I really appreciated like the, the resource of having sort of, like, it was a different assignment every time. It give you a lab just to kind of like go play around in and like, um, I felt like it gives a very clear buy-in for people to just, uh, go, um, explore. It's like, if you didn't want to go into cybersecurity, uh, which is, I'm looking into it, but like, if you don't want to go into cybersecurity specifically, like it's still just a lot of like networking information. And then you get tons to know about that. There's a lot of like base of information about that. And that's been helpful in the robotics seems like knowing like how that all works, knowing with like contextual stuff, like because I'm on the robotic, uh, the programming team for robotics. Uh, yeah, it feels like it's just giving me a lot of context for my future pursuits in standards things.
Right. Next one. So how, how is this class different from your other classes? So like your core classes, how are the ones that you, I mean, you've all taken multiple. So thinking about those as a whole, like what makes them different from your other classes? Are you gonna start or something?
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, it's kind of the same thing. Um, just, yeah, I, it feels like whatever ended, uh, whatever the class was, it, I felt like I had a lot of freedom to excel or like to like go beyond whatever was part of the assignment. Um, and like be creative, uh, in, yeah, in all these different things. Uh, like whether it was like cybersecurity, you have to do assignments, but you can go off and do whatever you want. Like you had project to projects that like had no limits, like wait, how much time you wanted to invest. Um, and yeah, I felt like just like, uh, I guess like the classes and culture and like the teachers, like knowing like being a CTE teacher, um, I come from that, that's the background. I have that attitude. I felt like that was also just been kind of helpful overall. Um, with like, yeah, it feels, I don't know, I guess it's hard to explain. It's just a, a good, uh, good vibe around the, um, sort of like treatment of like, getting ready for the future and not being like, here is the street. So, yeah.
I would say what I like most about CTE classes or business in specific is the creativity adding on to that. Just like I'm given a set amount of rules and like regulations, but within those rules, I'm able to be creative. And that's what I like most because that's what I'm pursuing, like marketing. So I would say like the creative innovation and like being able to create what you want. And I think that's a huge part of learning that all kids should go through. So like, like that's, that's been the biggest difference between our core classes and like English is, is being able to create something, make my vision come alive. So, yeah.
I think my favorite parts of CTE classes is not just that we can be more creative, but it gives us chances to branch off of the class itself. Because a lot of the classes, like the teachers and them, they have their own clubs and they're obviously trying to get people to join their clubs. But they're teaching you things about it and they're really just pushing you to do more. And like all the classes that I've taken over the past couple of years, they really prepared me for like my job interviews for my job itself. Cause I'm a server, so I'm talking to plenty of people every day. They've also prepared me for, I taught a lot of, I've learned a lot of entrepreneurship, like with the plant sale and it helped me start my own nail business. And I just really think that these classes itself, they give a lot more than you can get from the core classes you need to take because yes, you're, you're learning things from those. But I really think that these CTE classes help you branch off more and learn more skills that you're gonna use in the real world, like just with people. And I think they help you more like adapt to any situation that you might come across.
Um, I would say the CTE classes are different because they're more hands-on and focused on real-world skills. So instead of just reading and taking tests constantly, you're kind of learning things that will directly connect with like possible future careers, kind of like what you're talking about. Um, but they also teach like soft skills, like teamwork and communication and time management, um, which are all just as important as technical skills.
Um, I feel like taking CTE classes has really enhanced my, my communication and cloud imaging skills with students that I don't know. Um, again, like they said, it's very hands-on. And I feel like specifically with my CTE teachers, what I've experienced is that I'm treated more like an equal and like I'm an adult compared to them. Um, in my core classes, it's definitely a lot more rules and textbooks where I feel like in my CTE classes, there's a level of trust that I have with those teachers that I don't have with my core teachers. Um, cause like other kids said, there's a lot of more creative freedom in CTE classes. And it's just that level of trust that's built with those teachers where they tell you, this is the overall general idea of your project, now go build something with it. And I just feel like I have connections with those teachers that I don't really experience with regular teachers at my high school.
Um, in the topics of like healthcare, I think that they are more important in science. Cause of how it all from like change of some rules about healthcare. And learning about these classes with CTEs, I think it would benefit a lot for a student to learn about healthcare as well as, uh, give them a chance to be, or more connected to healthcare. Uh, especially those students who's interested in the healthcare system. Um, cause I was interested in healthcare and I didn't really know how medical science was that helping. But getting into a class, um, got more experience of the healthcare. And it also benefited me to be more connected to other hospitals and clinics. Cause now I'm also doing folk progress where I am taking care of patients as an example. And, uh, as you get into more of CTE classes where it's on point and targeted to your pathway in the future, it makes you realize what you actually want to do in the future and sets you up for your future. And I think that's what is most different about it.
I just want to put out there that we love our core classes too. We do. Yeah. Uh, that, uh, so what, uh, next question, let's go to, uh, what's one skill that you've learned in your CTE classes that you are proud of? Um, and if anybody wants to start, we'll start with you and then we'll, we'll let Laura and Tate have a break. Or, or Tate, you can go for it. You wanna go for it and say it?
I'm ready.
All right, go for it.
Um, yeah, uh, I couldn't, I was trying to write down those, I couldn't think of the words. I said self-ledness. I don't know the word, but like the ability to like be self-led. I felt like that's been, I've seen a lot of progress for myself over the, over the past four years. Um, like looking at just like the different class, like I, when I had, uh, intro to programming, the game design, there's a lot of just like did what I was told, but like, there was a lot of like, I can do what I want. Or like, I can, I can do, or I will get done as much as I am willing to put, put the time into. So like through like project management and everything else, I've seen a lot of that and like in, um, I know, uh, robotics isn't specifically C, but there's a lot of connection in, in vast. But, um, through, through that, I've seen a lot of like that of like professionalism from that. Um, and like getting to experience that, like in competitions, like I'm, uh, I'm a scout lead. I'm just, I talk to the people and, uh, more than most other people would, uh, in that case. And so like, it's a lot of communication of the people and like, I feel like I've learned, yeah, just a lot, a lot of that professionalism and it feels like the most real-to-life after-high-school thing that I've experienced. It's just like, uh, yeah, like Jayden was saying, just like feeling like you're talking to adults about things that you know about and like, and not, and, uh, yeah.
I would say the biggest skill is learning how to be collaborative with others. Just because a lot of the projects require to meet new people and get into groups. So like learning time management, how to balance each other's time out on, bringing both of our ideas and our visions into the project and just how to balance that. So being collaborative for sure.
I also agree with the both of them. I think that they've taught us how to be independent, but in a way where you can also collaborate with others. So you're not only basing things off of your ideas and your experiences, but you're learning off of others and you're teaching others while also being able to do your own work. And I also really think that I've learned a lot of leadership from these roles. Like my freshman year, I probably wouldn't be able to tell you the difference between leading and managing. But now I really know the basics of it. And I think also from my CTE classes, again with FFA, I was our secretary for a bit. And being in that role as well really taught me leadership and also being the greenhouse manager. I've, I'm talking to freshmen to senior and just tons of kids every day. And I really think that those roles and those opportunities really teach us how to just be leaders and how to deal with different peoples, uh, like things that they need and, uh, also wants and needs and wants in the correct ways where we can help them grow and not just make them think that we're managing them in a way.
Did you talk to my boss?
Spying difference.
Um, one skill I'm really proud of is problem solving during time that I had built robots, sixteen hours. Um, I had to troubleshoot and adapt quickly, um, and it taught me how to stay calm and to find solutions. Uh, well, under pressure, sorry. Trying to think of a word. Um, and that's helping in and out of class, just to say that.
Um, one skill I've learned is definitely teaching other students. Um, it's because of my CTE classes that I'm in the position I am with DECA and being president. And I feel like taking on that role and especially being a senior as well, there's a level of leadership that is expected of you. And it's definitely something I had never experienced before, um, before coming into DECA. And I feel like especially this year, I've taken on numerous projects and experiences where I've had to lead younger students and show them how to do things and how to handle this club after I leave and graduate. And I don't think I would have learned that skill, um, so thoroughly in high school if it wasn't for my CTE classes and being a DECA. And so I think that's definitely what I'm most proud of.
Um, one skill that I learned was challenging myself. Um, cause in the classes I learned about drugs and it's the drugs or the topics are more related to the society or the public because it's more common to teenagers, uh, my age, as well as my close friends. And learning about that topic challenged me in different ways. It's like families, like those families used to do it, and I didn't get why, uh, why they were super addicted to it. Uh, why can't they just stop? That was always my curiosity questions. And learning more depth, I got to know the reason why the actual thing they can't get out of it. It was actually really challenging. Being is challenging with most, and I just want to go ahead.
Right. So some of you mentioned this already, uh, a little bit, but, uh, wanna know first off, like, share what your goal is? Like what, what's that first career for you that you're looking for? And then like how did CTE help you figure that out that you wanted to do that? Or that you maybe didn't want to do something else? So, uh, Laura, you wanna start us off with that?
Yeah. Um, so definitely, um, both of the classes I took, or a lot of classes I took, uh, they actually like helped me get invested into the healthcare. It's something that like made me so much interested or, uh, gives, or like inspires me to go in more in-depth and, uh, find out the secrets behind healthcare and stuff like that. It's more like, uh, like you're solving or like you're trying to find out as you're addicted or something like that. And it's something that I also find myself enjoying or getting interested in. And with that, I think that, uh, taking these classes actually helped me to realize what I want to do in the, in the future. Uh, so now I'm trying to like go into becoming a radiologist or nurse or anything in the field. I am dedicated and like for sure targeting healthcare because it's something that I see myself in the future doing it.
Um, after high school, I would be attending the University of San Diego and I'm majoring in marketing and minoring in international business. Um, I think for sure my CTE classes have definitely led me to this place. Um, specifically my freshman year, when I took personal choices, I again was very drawn to the finance unit, which is definitely not something I'd ever, um, enjoyed doing before, even thought about doing in middle school. Um, and because of that finance unit, that's what led me to DECA and that's what led me to AP Statistics and taking these math courses. And just knowing that after I graduated from college, I want to go into marketing analytics. And, um, classes such as yearbook, like that has definitely drawn me to talk to strangers and students in school that I've never spoken to and branch out and go to games and take photos and interview people. And it's just that level of public speaking that I would not have reached. And that's also why I am minoring in international business because I want to help people I don't know and I want to travel and branch out and experience new things. And it's because of those classes, it's definitely enhanced my public speaking and ability to talk to strangers and definitely helped me become more outgoing. And that's definitely why I'm majoring and minoring in what I am.
Um, so my CTE classes have helped me figure out that I really want to pursue STEM. I originally wanted to go into science. I thought that for years till I joined robotics. And I was like, oh my God, I don't want to do science. I really love robotics. Um, so now I am going to Perry Technical Institute in the fall. That's a trade school and I just make instrumentation, automation and robotics. And honestly, the CTE programs, like they gave me the chance to try new things and figure out what I'm passionate about.
So I'm studying abroad in Oxford with, uh, PLU in the fall. And I've, I would say that I've always wanted to go into healthcare. I've always wanted to do some kind of surgery. So I think that since I was already pretty set on what I wanted to do, that my CTE classes helped me take the steps that I needed. Like, um, being in the employment skills contest really helped me just be able to talk to medical professionals. And I ended up reaching out to one and even started shadowing one. And I think that these classes just even just give us connections. Cause even if you already know what you're doing, you can use like your teachers and these classes in general to get different connections and different just ideas of ways to reach out and just reach those stepping stones. Like if I would have never taken the employment skills, I don't think I would have chose PLU because they have so many jobs to offer. But I think they also really helped me write my college essay. They also really helped me just, again, just reach out to people and try new things and just do as much as I could.
So I'm going into marketing. So I'm going into marketing and I didn't really find that out till sophomore year. I took a intro to business and marketing. And teacher, she really encouraged me to join DECA, but I wasn't like too sure, I was kinda weary about it. But it ended up being a good choice for me now. I'm vice president of DECA. But I would say just like finding a career that allowed me to be creative and innovative because that's what I enjoy doing the most. And so my end goal was to work like in corporate and beginning in marketing. But my end goal really is to own a business, so taking Ivy Business uh standard level and then higher level. It's really given me like a better idea on what I need to do and how I need to lay out a business plan in order to. Uh like create a business, so I feel like going into college and. Really being able to actually understand how to make a business plan has like it's great leading back to me for sure. So having background knowledge for sure.
Uh, so uh after high school, I'm going to Western one. Yeah, I just wanna go to Western Washington University and I'll be uh going for computer science. Uh, but my end goal is to go into communications as well, uh planning on going to uh. Technical project management, something in there um. And uh, yeah, I, I mean, like, I like you can see with the classes I took, like I've, I've known, like, wanna do stuff with computers. And that was kind of all I knew going into high school and I'm like, I'm gonna take all the computer classes, so um but it was through there that like. Um, like I found more like passion likes and for like specifics of it and like. Uh, and just like the pursuit of just kind of like general knowledge, but it was through um. The more social, the more social classes like project management and uh. Kind of digital photo um and I A D of like um. And uh and the robotics club that I want to go into uh project management and um. Uh, sort of like the communication, the uh communications part of it, cuz it was a lot of like as I've gotten, like been on the team longer, I've just been a lot more like. Organization and like teaching people and like and uh like knowing what the product needs to be, in this case of a robot um. And yeah, I feel like it's been a lot of like discovery of. How much I just like talking to people and like I would not, I wouldn't have really known if I hadn't taken the robotics one class and been her. I've been like, hey, you should know robotics, and I did and like. And yet now here I am and I get, I'm been this robotics, it's just such a huge part of my life and it's only through that that like I've known how to, how to work on a team. Properly and not just like how to like know what the project is, but like how to communicate with people and like know what people need. To be able to or like like uh how their feeling and like what, what they feel be the process is to be like how to communicate that cuz like everyone has different ideas. Everyone thinks their idea is correct, how to do that anyway, um but yeah, no, it's just been a lot of uh. Yeah, a lot of communication, yeah.
Right, uh, so we talked about lots and lots of the like things that are going on, awesome. Alright, there we go. Alright, so uh let's talk about the things that if you had an opportunity to change things or add something um to C T programs. We got a lot, but if there's something that you uh feel like to change, what, what would you? What change would you make or what would you add to it? Maybe you wanna start us up?
Maybe, maybe.
We can come back.
Yeah. Come back to me.
Okay.
I go.
Um, for me personally, I really love our C T program and I don't have any issues, but I think a really. Cool thing could be maybe like a trial and error period because there's a lot of kids that I've come across in. Since I was a freshman and that are in C T classes that just got enrolled because they needed a credit or they just didn't choose a class in time. And a lot of them, you can tell that it's not just that they aren't doing well in the class, you can tell that there's no enjoyment in it. And I think that if there was a trial and error period, maybe like a two week period. Where they could really see if they liked the class, then they could stay or leave, but I think that. Well, me personally, I will be honest, in my plant science classes here, there is um a handful of kids that. Don't really do much, but you can tell it's because they're not enjoying it and you can tell that they have other interests that they would strive in. Like much better than in the plant science class, but I think that could be really beneficial to anyone from a freshman to a senior. And I really think that it could also. Just give them more opportunities instead of placing them in one class that they just are trying to get through through the year. And they're not trying to expand their interests, they're not trying to expand. Um, just they're not trying to retain any of the knowledge that the teachers are trying to teach, so it just comes off as. Oh, this person isn't doing anything, oh, this person just isn't a very well run student, so I think that could be pretty beneficial to C T program.
Yeah, I can, I completely agree. I think that like, something I I appreciate about, appreciate about some of the classes, there is. A buy-in that like if you might not really know if you're interested at first, but then you get there and you're like, oh, this is actually fun. Um, but there is totally like that aspect of it of like. First, like specifically, it's like the curriculum aspect of, for example, cybersecurity, I had a lot of fun with it, but I'm like. I know like I was working through it at the same time as uh cuz it was like the first year that it was uh. Uh brought up and so like our teacher Bradley, like we both worked through it at the same time, like how we went through it, so. There's a lot of like, yeah, like people took, people took the class for the credit, which like. If someone finds that they have incredible passion for cybersecurity, like that's great, but like that doesn't always happen. Uh, and so and I saw a lot of like, and I don't know if this is specifically cuz it's PLT, like the PLT W curriculum specifically, but like there was a lot of like. Handholding, I guess, of the word, like through, like through this specific curriculum, and I know this isn't the whole program, but there's what, what comes to mind um. But yeah, there's a lot and, oh, no, yeah, and with the intro to program, the games on, there was through that one as well, there was a lot of like, it would tell you exactly what to. For that one, like writing the code, for for like cybersecurity, like it gave you the lesson and if, and if you sat and read it, it's like really in-depth and really interesting. I loved reading all about it. But um, but you don't need to, and so there was that aspect of it, of it like uh, a lot of, it was a lot of just like. Drag, like if you, if you didn't do anything, it would kind of drag you through the motions. And it was with that, like, yeah, what the solution would be like a trial and error period or sort of um emphasizing the aspect of like. What is to be gained from it and one in that I was also like, I don't wanna fault Mr. Bradley because that was the first year and he didn't know what the lesson was. He didn't know what you're supposed to be learning and now we do know what we're supposed to be learning, so like we can like really see, see like what is to be gained from that, but like. Sometimes that just has to be found, so I guess that's a really unspecific answer, but yeah, trial and error period or whatever.
I would say uh more few trips cuz well. With my business flash, we've only taken one so far. And it was to Delano's coffee, just locally in Summum, and it was like really cool to see the background of the business. It gave me a lot of just inspiration and like more knowledge and insight into how like a company like that is running behind the scenes. So I feel like it's one thing to learn in the classroom, but for kids to actually get that like real experience where they will stick with them and inspire them.
Um, mine's kind of rich though. Uh, I would like more trades related programs to be introduced. Um, I didn't really know much about trades until I started taking stuff like aerospace. And my dad also works in trades and he was like, no, you should really think about this. Cuz once I was like off the ball, I don't wanna do science anymore and something, I was like, I would rather do something in like STEM. I was like trying to ask around and nobody knew and I was like, are you guys kidding me? Like, how do I find this information? And so I would love that if we had programs that kind of geared a little more towards that instead of just, here's how you go to college or here's how you go straight to the workforce. Some little bit more traits.
Um, I at first did not have an answer for this question. I really didn't think there was anything that I wanted to change or add. But I loved your answer about the trial and error. I think that is a great idea and it really. Opened my perspective to the fact that there are numerous students who don't enjoy their C T classes because. Not that it's the problem of the class, but that it's a lot of time commitment, it's a lot of projects, collaboration, public speaking, and that's not tailored to a lot of people. But at the same time, we have C T courses that you don't have to public speak as much or work with other kids as much. And I think especially at Bonnie Lake, there's this idea where I just have to get my C T classes out of the way because we have required courses to take. Um, but I would love more C T fairs. I know we have job fairs and. Club fairs and career fairs, but I don't really see as many C T fairs and I would love if those teachers and students who love those classes. Kind of just created a fair for that and it be a required thing at our school during the school day. And kids can see um that C T is not just one type of thing, like there's so many different classes you can take that relate to C T courses. And that they can realize that you don't have to just pick one on a schedule to get it out of the way and reach those credits. But you can actually enjoy those classes and enjoy your time in those programs and maybe it'll help you find a career choice in the future.
I also have the same idea with Jayden. Um, I just thought that we should have a lot more C T where we have just like uh. Cuz I remember I went to the cultural celebration event and there are some events that happen, but. There's not really much about C T, and I don't think a lot of students doesn't know what C T is also is for, so people just. Or the students usually just think that it's just classes that you have to get, that is just to graduate. But if they actually don't understand the meaning behind why and it's actually benefits them and you can like gain a lot more experience and. Be an advantage to them, something like, or like uh C T like tours and stuff like that, it actually benefits.
Well, that leads perfect segue to our next question here. Uh, so if you're gonna tell another kid about C T E. What would you tell them? Laura, what would you tell those people at the events if you were there representing? What would you tell our students?
Um, I would say it's definitely worth it, um, cuz I started in C T because when I was freshman, sophomore, I drove my high school. And it made me realize uh get a lot of experience earlier at the age. Um, where else I've gone to choose my career at the early age, also have some chances where I could change up some. You have a lot of time to think about it and there's still lots to ask about how is it, what is it, the load worth? Um, I would say it's the same amount of work, but it's actually worth it. You get a lot more understanding. Uh, a lot more things that relates to the world where we live in. So I think it, I think just how it's done, it benefits a lot, it would actually help you get a lot better.
Um, I would again tell them, don't treat it like a credit that needs to be filled. Um, a lot of C T courses are honestly like families because you're with other people who have the same interests as you. And it leads to so many different gateways to communities and groups of people. Like it's because of my C T classes that I'm in things such as DECA and A S B and Key Club, like I met people in those classes. Who introduced me to those clubs and broader programs because I'm interested in the same things they are. And so when I picked my C T classes, I was very specific on taking classes that I knew I'd be interested in. And I think we just need to remind students to do that and not just to take one because they have to take one because. I mean, C T courses have taught me to be a better leader and I've grown in these classes and I've branched out and become. More of an exceptional student and I don't think that if I was back in freshman year, I would think. Of me being the senior I am now if it wasn't for C T.
Um, if somebody's talking about going into C T class, I would tell them to go for it. C T classes are hands-on and teach robust skills. They help you to learn different careers and help you find out what you're passionate about while also gaining valuable experiences.
I would tell someone, again, this is very much a cliche, but. I would tell them just to try everything cuz I've worked from culinary, which is things that we're eating to soil, which are very opposite side of the spectrum. But I, I'll be completely honest, I could not tell you one bad thing about those classes. I've. Enjoyed them and honestly, the worst thing that could happen is you get a good grade in the class and you meet new people and. I would honestly also say to join the clubs that your C T teachers are pushing because if I didn't. End up doing FFA, I wouldn't have the chance to enter nationals, I wouldn't learn any of the knowledge that I've gotten on agri-science, unemployment skills. I've even done parliamentary procedure and milk quality, so all of that stuff just. Being from a certain C T class is really saying something cuz I just would tell these people that it's not just a C T class, it. It's just something that's really gonna stick with you for life because I think in ten years, I'll probably bring up FFA again. I'll probably even tell my kids to do FFA. And just take a C T class in general.
Would say my goodest advice would be to be open-minded cuz you never know where life might take you or. Like what uh career path you might choose and I feel like a lot of the answers up here, we didn't originally really want to do that or. Like we didn't understand it, but we were open-minded to it and it led us down a whole new path, so I would say just be open.
Yeah, technology is such a real standard, so uh, yeah, I really like to extend about family, um. Yeah, for sure, that picture of there, that, yeah, that is my family, that is the robotics scene. Uh, yeah, I mean, I know a lot really well, but it's, it's, it does feel different because we all want to be there and so that, that does what, that, yeah, that is what a lot of the um. The classes do feel like, it does feel like, like people want to be there, like similar interests and uh. Yeah, and then also, yeah, if I were to say anything, like I remember when I was first told about just like about C T classes, people like, yeah, take them, they are fun, like, cool. I'm sure a lot of things are fun, um, but I, it does feel like it is, it's so much more than that cuz it's, it is like a buy-in to, to clubs or to. Knowing what you really wanna do, cuz like I would take class, I mean, like I'm gonna go sit behind a computer for the rest of my life, then I would do, and then I went to take classes and we're gonna like, I do not wanna do that. And like, you know, and now I know that, but I knew how specifically I wanted to do that. Um, yeah, so it, and I. I would also, I guess, emphasize the, the flexibility of it all because there are so many different classes um. And like, I don't know, I guess that's it, yeah, there, there are a lot of different classes, there, there is something that you can enjoy and if you don't enjoy it, you'll at least get something out of it. Whether that's just, just community and you find out what you don't want to do.
Right, I'm gonna open the floor cuz I wanna make sure we have time for everybody to ask questions and kind of share. Um, so really questions, if there's anything else you wanted to share as well, like a little bit of more open uh conversation with it. Thank you, by the way, I had goosebumps the entire time, so uh, I literally like you, thank you. So open, open everybody.
Well, I think maybe I kind of was thinking as, as everyone was talking, like instead of just peppering you with more questions, but maybe we could. Try to formulate a discussion here and I was wondering if the board would, would kind of think about. After hearing all that, like what are your thoughts? What are the themes that you heard and kind of what do you wonder about? And then maybe that could draw in some answers from them as we kind of think about that, so what were your thoughts, themes or wonders? Do you wanna go?
I'll kick a theme off, the theme I heard was that everything classes tie back to the real world. And that's huge and that, that puts you years ahead of when we went to school. And talking about doing a business plan, you wouldn't normally do that till Econ one oh one at college and you've already have that skill, so. That helps kick things off.
Well, I like how much it learned before they go towards college and where they understand what it's about. So they're gonna go somewhere that they enjoy. All these young people have said, I really enjoy doing this, we're gonna do that, we're going to medical and. And that's so few people know that and they waste time going to college and they start, and myself, they all start over again, you know?
Well, it may, you may figure out that college isn't for you.
Right.
That, right, a career trades.
Think uh we've talked a lot about graduation in this district and getting kids uh prepared for the future. And I just started jotting down notes that you all said, you know, I heard passion and, and you were inspired, you were motivated. Creative, self-directed, um enhanced your social skills, um personal connections, collaborative, curious, confident. Risk takers, problem solvers, making an impact, goal oriented um communication and you're highly reflective. And I just thought, oh my gosh, how prepared are these? You know, I, it just, I mean, and I could have written down more, so um I just was so impressed and um I feel really good about. Um, the programs that are available and keep talking to people and encouraging more kids to do it because I think it's clearly beneficial, so. Thank you for sharing.
I have a question, so as they enter this program, they can then pick classes they want to, part of they wanna do themselves?
Yeah, so they get to choose the classes that they go into. Um, we, we love it when they follow in a kind of way and you take a few courses in a row. We've heard of a couple that did that and then we've heard of a couple that are like, I did a little dabbling and, and I benefited also, I think you said that specific. Katie, I know you've been in all the classes, so there's that. Uh, but then they also get to choose if they wanna be a part of the clubs and extracurricular parts of that as well, so that's. Those are usually tagged on, so uh you know, computer science or robotics, you've got a robotics club that you can take what you're learning and go further, right? Or you can do plant science and you could take that further or you can take uh and get into HOSA with health sciences or DECA or you know, like. There's that opportunity to extend that a lot of them talked about as well, so you can pick the classes and then you can also pick that uh. You know, extension as well, so each, every C T class has some kind of a plus aspect to it, you know?
That's excellent.
What do you think?
I like you. So a, a long time ago, in a country far away, I was a principal. At high school and I never answered questions, so if this was the eighth grade parents or the kids are coming to our school. I gave questions and I turned to them and said, I think quite frankly, you guys have working knowledge where I just make things up. Unfortunately, adults have kind of butchered college and career readiness, I think. What does that mean to you? Cuz I've heard of uh an array of people are gonna do, think they're gonna do next, which is absolutely cool, I love that. But if, if this was a group and some parents said, what is college and career readiness? Could you? Give them something?
Um, I think. Part of what I think about like C T E specifically, and like I said before, like the vibe, um. Um but yeah, sort of like that attitude and aspect of it being more like the real world in the way of one, you're just talking to vibrating of people. What you will no matter what to 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 varying degrees. But I think that as of like, you're saying like, what we wanna do in the future. I mean, I. I'm I feel very strongly that like I've I've read it out like what I wanna do, but I don't wanna do, like through all these different things. But I still don't really know and I think that is that is just part of it, but I do think that. Part of the the thing that's made me feel the most ready is that I am through through this trial and error, I feel that I am ready to. Like learn different things, learn more things and be able to like. Move to something different, just knowing that wherever I go, I can find something that I can be passionate about and like and want to do and like feel like.
Like I'm a big believer in it's not really what you do in life, but it's like how you do it. I feel like the CTE class is prepared, like a work ethic and give you more hands-on experience, whether it's resume or like how you conduct yourself. Or like being collaborative, for example, I feel like if you can learn how to do things, then no matter what you do in life. It's more like impactful, you get the most, so I feel like being ready for that, so it's.
Uh like I said, I do running start, so I go to peers, so I'm at community college with. Well, for example, I took a sociology class and one of my peers was a fifty-year-old woman and I was. We ended up, we ended up getting into a conversation and I was telling her about my CTE classes and. She was talking about how she wishes she could have gotten just people and just classes to prepare her like that because. In her, because she's going to school again and she's just saying she's doing it for fun, she's going through life. But she said that it was just very cool and it's because this. Our generation itself, I feel like we are all a lot more prepared than past generations with the CTE program. And I just can really see the impact of it when I meet these people in my classes because. Like I said, I've had people that are from fifty to just my age, even younger than me, like fresh or not freshmen. Uh juniors that are taking it because I'm a senior now, but I really think that it's. Cool that I can see the impact of it and that I really am as prepared as I think I am, even though sometimes I don't feel as prepared, but I. Can see that what I'm doing for myself is really helping me and it'll really help me in the future.
Like they kind of all said it all, so I don't know where to go now.
Well, kinda tagged on, yeah, I feel like the classes definitely prepare you for what work is gonna be like when you get out there. And I have been at some classes like Corpus Aerospace, try to simulate exactly what a work like environment would be. Um so I feel like that's how it kinda gets you prepared for this kinda stuff, so I would say it's definitely worth taking class.
Um I feel like most students are scared of of graduation and branching off, which is a normal response to growing up. But I think CTE definitely is comfortable in the sense where it does like help kids. Know what work-life is about, like CTE classes have helped me gain internships and um. Like experiences that I wouldn't normally get. And I would be terrified to graduate next month if it wasn't for CTE because I wouldn't have felt as comfortable as I am now. And so I definitely think to remind students that, you know, growing up is hard and it's scary to leave home. But taking these courses, it definitely prepares you a lar- a larger extent than just showing up to school and trying to make it to the other day.
I thought that CTE classes are more like courses that are long-term competitive. But you're in high school, um in other words, like let's say it's uh college classes. Or college courses that you are basically taking in high school. Um where you are experiencing what it's like to be taking college course, but while you're also in high school. Uh and then also I feel like it was more like those students who take CTE, they can know that. If they took it and they realized that they just wanna get into real work. Um instead of going to a foreign college and go deal with that, they can choose to just. Going in real world and just, you know, do a few type of things and then get a certificate when they can stop working as soon as possible. Uh or people would be taking the CTE class, they can think or choose to go into the foreign college. Uh because of CTE, they have made them uh. Or um even give them more influence to them, which they are more inspired and go to college or university. While on the other word or on the other side, sometimes we just call CTEs, this is about, it's gonna work, it's pretty easy, I can handle it. And then they just choose to just go into the reality, face reality. I think it's more of that kinda program. Where it makes students to choose their own path, if they want to face the reality as soon as possible because they are prepared. Or if they wanna go beyond that and experience that.
Thank you, thank you all. JB, you gentlemen, they were wondering, do you got answers?
Um really much, uh yeah, I feel I feel like you a lot said. Um I had a couple, I guess, I mean, one, I was surprised how. Um I guess I my mind coming in thought that there would be really a track, like somebody would start one CTE and and follow that track throughout and. And I love the idea of that, that there was a lot of ex- exploration in multiple different tracks. One of the things that was interesting to me is a lot of the skills that you learned, regardless of if it was. In robotics or it was in health or it was in um you know, business work. They were a lot of the same skills. You're talking about, you're all shaking your head with collaboration, you're all shaking your head with leadership and. I mean, there's so many of those types of skills, so it 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 makes me feel like it opens up and prepares you. Um for wherever you're going to go because you're learning these skills that are are applicable across so many industries, right? So I think that was really cool. Um I really appreciated the way that you talked about some of the kids that might not enjoy CTE classes. And had a reason why and maybe even, you know, a potential solution because um. It's great, I think, that you all come, you know, the idea of open-mindedness and the idea of kind of finding. Kind of be surprised sometimes that you're exposed to something, go, wow, I didn't know I was gonna like that and I did and and I thought I was gonna like this and I didn't. But if you're someone who's in a class and you feel like this just isn't resonating with me and that that's a struggle, that. That impacts probably everyone and and that you saw that as student leaders and um recognize that and have solutions for that, so. Those are kind of my thoughts on it, but really great, you guys. Thank you for taking the time.
I mean, clearly, these programs are producing people who have really good public speaking skills. You sat down across from people you've never met and who are, you know, the adults and. Spoke really, really well and really articulated what it is that you loved about CTE or things you thought could be improved. And I I think that's a big takeaway for me is how do we, how do we educate students and parents sooner? So that it's not a surprise when you get to high school and you're like, oh no, I haven't sent up classes, like. Now you're thumbing through the the book, trying to find stuff, it's what can we do to pull that timeline farther back into middle school or even sooner? To start talking about CTE because I know a lot of parents of when my daughters went to summer high school that. Had never heard of it until maybe even their junior year and they, oh, I gotta get that credit done and they don't even know what it is, like a lot of you said, there's check on a box versus. We could pull that back and I I heard somebody, few of you talk about like um, you know, CT fairs or. Maybe seniors are hosting the booths and talking about stuff they're passionate about and that sort of thing. I know we do some of that at the. At the, you know, freshman uh intro nights, uh I don't we do that, but like. How can we build on that to so it's not, so people learn about it much, much sooner and. And I do think the the key part there is if you get into one, like, well, now you're stuck for the. You know, the rest of that class and if you don't like it and you're not passionate about it, it's gonna be, yeah, go ahead.
Um I think it would be, because I think the middle school does something sim- similar to advisory, like how we do it here. I think if we did something similar to the high school and beyond plan, but with like a CTE class, like maybe doing your interests. I think that could be beneficial because I have a younger brother, he's a freshman this year. And the only reason like they knew about the CTE classes is because I took them. But I think if maybe you took a questionnaire, like in actually your eighth grade year and you did it throughout the year at little increments. I think that would really be beneficial because these kids are actually gonna hear about it and they're gonna wonder about it, like what's. Plant science, what's culinary, what are you doing in those classes? And I think that it could help to do stuff like that and. Because with our high school and beyond plan, um I remember we had to actually do research for it. And we had to do research for these different jobs and even do a test on like which jobs fit our personalities most and I think that could. Help some kids.
So in with high school and beyond plan, would there be opportunities to connect CTE courses to some of the things that show up as. As areas of strength so that it could be like, oh, you you seem to like this type of a career. Here are some of the CTE courses that are offered at the high school that would give you experience in that or. Something to them, like I don't know if we do that or don't.
Yeah, so great things, uh since you guys have all been in middle school and actually the over the last year or so, we've been working on uh re- re-. Uh realigning our our middle school advisory to be more consistent across the board for all three of our middle schools. And then also include some of those things, so it's it's a Washington State requirement to do that from seventh grade and up now and it. Wasn't necessarily before and it was kind of a mixed bag, uh but we are definitely doing both of those things, so we've got a little bit. They actually take the survey and they're doing some of those things similar to what you're doing and then they're also, they have an opportunity where they're connecting with. Specifically, we try and hi- highlight the ninth-grade classes that are available to them, but also the pathways that are available and so some of the the. Tools and documents that we've created over time, um they're getting exposed to those earlier and I know our middle school principals and counselors have spoken really highly about. How that's landing, um and then also, you know, students are more prepared in choosing classes for the right reasons, not because like. Hey, I'm present, take, I'm gonna take that class because he said so, it's more of like, oh, I really am, I love to do work in my hands, so I'm gonna go and drill and rip it, right? Manufacturing, sounds awesome, right? I love to do business and I think I wanna do, you know, so we're getting more of that and it's still work in progress. I'm not gonna say it's perfect, but any means, but those features that you were both kinda mentioning are, we're working, we're building them up, so, yeah, that's awesome.
Yes, yeah, sort sort of kinda like with both those things, because yeah, I've heard a lot of like, I, most people.
Do you know what that is?
Uh is that is the camera?
It is, and so it tracks who's talking, so it's looking at you right now.
Um so, yeah, I've heard a lot of stuff of like, uh people are very confident in the program and uh slash stuff about, yeah, having like a a CTE fair. And like, we already did the survey and then like with that, like I was saying, with the um, when I kinda stumbled through the like cybersecurity and like knowing what that is. Sort of, just like the general thing of like uh advertising, what are the classes specifically? Because I know when I was told like what cybersecurity was, my dad's, my dad's job is information security. Um so like I I I kinda knew what that was, I'm like, oh, this is interesting. And then I see the class, I'm like, so this is not, I have no idea what that is, I don't like what this was to be and no one. No one really did and it was the first year, but like, I guess there'd be more people. Uh knowing what the classes are specifically, because if you look at the robotics class, like, okay, you go and do do robotics. What is that? It's like that is specifically like building certain things and then like IED, which is like, if you look at it, it's like computer stuff. Oh, computer robotics, it's specifically like three D modeling things, like very different, so I feel like specifics of what each class is. And advertising what those like, what those things are, like what those skills might be, I feel really important because like. Obviously go to do things and like not knowing what the class is going to entail and then finding that you love whatever it is is great. But then it's like, if you finally go there and find that you don't, you have no idea what it was, don't really like it, then you know, like. And or also like being able to pursue a specific skill they wouldn't realize that you'd find, you wouldn't realize that you'd find communication in the digital photo class.
Love always, this program's continuing to grow over the years too. It's just been really great to watch and see it develop. I know I didn't know a whole lot about it, but six years ago, I'm like, kids are gonna do CT and they're like, why? I'm like, well, because we had a board presentation, it sounds really awesome. And just to watch it grow and continue to expand and have you guys here tonight has just been, it's just a treat for us, so. Thank you for all your time and energy and the ways you spoke about your programs. It really does help us. Uh be more informed of of what's going on and and the programs we have, so.
Talking of marketing, you know, this, and I pointed to the camera, this is being recorded, so we, because we always post these meetings online on board, so it's. It'll be an asset, a marketing asset that you could probably use. Advertise, pull some snippets of the things that you've all said tonight and that'll help the the students behind you. Because I do think that's, that is the the servant leadership thing that we do in this district is try to leave it better for the next. Group that's coming along and then always improving things for a kid behind you. I'm very beneficial, I really appreciate it. Is there any other thoughts or?
We said before, I'm I'm impressed with these, and people have gone through the program, now leaving here, I wanna go do this. I'm gonna go here and do this, you know, they have a plan for next year and the year beyond, and so they don't do that, this, and it's such a. Unique opportunity, they have hands-on, touching different programs that really suits their desire.
Yeah.
Was gonna be calculations or helping the health field or doing robotics, which is a huge growing field and stuff. Opportunities here that they are seeing that's ready for them, at least when they like to do that.
Yeah, but I think sometimes it's easier to eliminate. It's easier to eliminate things you don't like than to try to find that one thing you do like and. I I heard somebody say it where they actually, they've learned the skill through CTE of identifying what they don't like very quickly. I think that's the, I think that's the key as parents who are paying for college right now. You want your students to figure it out rapidly instead of, you know, being in college for six, seven, eight years.
Well, and even before that, you certainly didn't sleep your way through high school, right? Like it sounds like you thoroughly enjoyed some of your classes in high school. And so making the most of that experience, you know, anything you do above and beyond that after you graduate is just bonus. Um that's what we hope for, but to know that you are taking advantage of things in high school and. Having a really rich experience during your four years, I think that is just uh a gift. I think that's amazing, so, well done.
Thank you for being here, it's been very.
Glad I came tonight.
See you tomorrow, I like the topic.
You're gonna come back? See you guys on the stage.
Thanks for being here.
And as they uh exit, is there any real questions tonight?
Well, I have something and I don't know if you know about, but Dr. Depp has been very helpful to me, learned the history. And going to the schools, put in different departments, what they're involved with. I understand where she's got that from, does our election us do that? Because Dr. Depp involves so many things. Being on on the Facebook and different places, but recently. I must be tense for eternity. Our camp camel counselor.
Yes. Oh, yes. You too, yeah.
Appreciate it, congratulations.
We'll have to show this.
There she goes.
Oh my god, it says from budget meetings to blades of grass. Counselor does it all. This was so much fun. I was gonna bring this up next week, uh I guess Dave has something there, but. These are Brown's crew, I'm telling you, they are incredible human beings and just wonderful workers and just to work with them for a few hours. Full appreciation for what they do, so.
Well, yeah, with me going around the district, what's going on, it makes, oh, my eyes a lot off a lot too, I appreciate that.
I was impressed when you drove off the trailer, I was like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is like, that's a, that's like a trust ball.
They were, they were, they took care of me though, you know, no serious accidents.
Looking forward to talking about it again.
Thank you.
Any other board discussion? So what am I, or case in life is um status quo for no reason, guys be crazy, so at least have discussions. When I came to the district, we didn't have board meetings or anything on Wednesday, that was church. Did it once because it was the only day of the week we could fit something in. A tongue lashing from Dr. Ice was not fun. But um I would like that at some point, if we could have a discussion of what that works best with. I'm not, I mean, we just have Wednesdays, but I don't know that it's the best for all of us, so I'd love to throw that out there. And like I said, maybe not tonight, but.
Yes, we're just, you're just kinda planning the scene for a thought on that or?
Yeah. I it worked well in my past throughout the scene, have some discussion with it. Yeah, I'd be curious to know, like my wondering on that would be like. Is consistency better, is rotation consistency better? Yeah, my my question is more just the day, the day for everybody. Yeah, like I said, there's no rhyme or reason that we went to Wednesdays. I still hurt when I think of being on a Wednesday. He was a lovely man to. Yeah, so if we do that, that'd be great. Yeah, I think maybe we could all leave tonight and start thinking about that and then we could break it up at the next study session. Yeah, I think maybe we could all leave tonight and start thinking about that, and then we could bring it up at the next study session to see if anybody. Feels strongly or neutral, or there's a better day of the week, that's better, and then of course, balance that with what. The administration would be conducive for the administration.
Part what in in my thought was um. Lori's crew, I know that her, she has a a cycle that they have to have things done, and then. You know, she goes through it now, and it's presented to us, and then they move on to the next one, I honestly thought. Just from their standpoint, you know, use their time effectively, maybe having at least five minutes on the weekend if we move to Tuesdays, I just, as. I just chose, but.
Right, but like, how, yeah, like you're, you're saying like, how does the prep, how does the prep land within, they have their jobs that they have to do. And then prepping for these is kind of like.
It's part of the job, trust me.
It's part of the job, and I, I could see it being that the extra part, and what part of the week would it fit better into?
Any day but Monday or Friday.
Yeah, yeah, Monday or Friday.
Totally spend Friday nights with you, but like. Uh, my, yeah, if we could stay away from Mondays or Fridays, and my only other request would be that if we could make this decision. No later than June.
Well, I can say sooner than later, cause we'll start the calendars out.
The count, that our new board calendar will start in September, um. And, yeah, any day but Monday or Friday, and if we can know by June, so we can change all the dates.
As you know, embodying Lake Boys out of the Tuesday, that seemed to work well for us, cause the paper came out with all our weekend, Monday. It's such fresh in our minds, not dragging out, we don't wanna talk about our means, so that's a, that's a good day also. We live Tuesday or Wednesday for me, we can talk about later, but that's Tuesday's a good, really good day.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll continue that conversation. Hey, there, any other topics for tonight?
I I just so appreciate, um. One dedication of so many people over the years to get where we are with CTE and. Things that that this district just tried that didn't work, but that was okay, I mean, that's how we learned to grow, and um. I think listening to the kids from studying at Oxford, which I can relate to. Um, to, you know, I'm gonna, I know I'm gonna do this. One of the things I so enjoyed the second gentleman when he talked about learning to learn and that, because we know, I mean, it's been hammered. For those of us that work with kids for twenty, thirty years now, but. You know, I got into a career because I was either gonna be, according to my counselor, I was gonna be a nurse or a. A nurse or a firefighter, that neither one of those. Um, but we know that they right now can say, this is what I'm going to do. And there's the greatest opportunity that they're gonna actually be changing their careers eight to ten times. Yeah, and all of those kids demonstrated skills that quite frankly, just exude the fact they're going to be successful. I would say ninety eight percent chance, because of those skills, the thoughts, thought processes they have. Do I believe in the cyber security, that's all you're gonna do the rest of your life, probably not, because it's all gonna be taken forward by some. Way smarter computer than I, but he's gonna be ready to go to the next step, the next step, excellent, I just so appreciated all of them, so thoughtful of that, but um. I just think of all the way down to, you guys already know that Ron Moncries, when I first came to this district, was visionary. Different gentleman visionary about that, and then, you know, sharing, so we've just progressed, but it's. It's interesting, because those people didn't overlap, but it has been such a sequential progression to get to where we're at now. And I know where Aaron and and folks are gonna take it next, it's gonna, so, so, um, I mean, that's thirty seven years now for me. Watching it roll like this, and it's just.
Well, I think that's, it's a, it's a good problem that we now have this foundation, now we're like, how do we just tell more people about it, how do we? Get ahead of it, and how do we fine tune these little things, like when they're talking about, well, what if you get into a class, you don't, you don't end up being passionate, what do you do? And I think we're at a really good spot, that that's our problem, right? Like, we don't have the problem of. Creating the classes, and I can, I can see the future of so many more different classes and things we can keep adding, but there's at least a good. Core group there.
I would say part about the classes and try it for two weeks, talk to your high school principal.
You may have suicide watch going on too.
The other is, it's interesting, I think the junior highs over the last ten years have done such a better job each and every year of the education for kids. The problem is. These folks buy you, you have juniors and seniors of high school that don't have a buy in. And one of the things that it frustrates the heck out of the adults on that campus is how much. We talk, we show, we do, we videotape, we do, and it's, it's, it's individualized when it clicks with you. And I've had some kids that come back, you know, five years afterwards, after graduation, say, gosh, I really wish I would have done this. I said, did you know about? Yeah, but my friends didn't do it, so I didn't, so, yeah, but the, I loved it trying out art. J term was always one of my visions of life for high school, until you talk to auditors and people from fun schools and. Things like that, who said, no, yeah, but uh. That, that just got a little high built up, because it's such a great idea, I just don't know how they act legally.
I mean, I think that, 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 uh, that was my first thought, I'm like, oh, it sounds like a great idea, but to have. All these students, two weeks in a class, and go, okay, if you don't like it, okay, everybody switch, and then what happens, like, they don't like it in the next option, right?
It's hard to feel that.
Yeah, so I got, you know, great idea, probably not very practical, but are there ways that we can? And and again, a lot of it is, you know, a, on the English ability of of the kids, of taking a look at what those classes are. What, what are you going to learn? Is it something that you're interested in? Um, I mean, one of the, you know, one of the elements that, you know, it's about mindset, right? So, I mean, it's, it's how you welcome that mindset of like, this might not be the thing, but how valuable it is to learn that I don't like that. Um, I mean, the, the one who, the young man who was wanted to do cybersecurity, thought he was gonna sit at a, at his computer. And got into that and said, oh, yeah, no, and all, and realized through other explorations that he actually really liked working with other people and doing other things, right? But there's that, you have to be somebody who has that mindset to to not just go, ugh, I hate this and I don't wanna put time into it. But I, what is it that I like? How do I wanna engage? Um, do I wanna take, you know, the extra? Do the extra things that actually make the work interesting, right? So those extra classes, the extra clubs and the extra things that. That then take it uh to the next level, but um, so I, I think. Jumping classes after a trial period is probably not the way to go, but really, how do we have that ability to, to think about? Helping the kids to make that decision more thoughtfully, I guess, and then also helping them understand that if they made the wrong one. That there's still benefits to be had from it, right? And and I think, again, some of those benefits, like. You know, I said, across all of those different experiences, some of the soft skills about how to. Just manage yourself and work together and do all these things, I mean, if, if anybody could come out with just those. Uh, there's so much more.
The hard part for the adult ego is if kids talking to kids, that's what sets them, yes, is, I mean, just playing out. All the adults in the world, even the most loved, there's still that, and the hard part too is. Some of the the extra things they they do, which is part of being in the CTE, you have some families who can't. I have to go home and babysit, cause my mom's got a work right there, I've gotta do.
Gonna do a job.
And and so it's horrible, it's like you kind of get excluded, because you have to have that level, which is awesome, but. So it's, how can we help, I guess, that's the part I'm trying to, how can you? But very cool.
Well, I appreciate the fact we're being, we're talking about fine tuning, we're not sitting here talking about all the. Blowing the whole thing, oh, my God, that was this was this terrible presentation, and we need to start all over, it's the fact that we're. Thanks to all of the people who worked so hard on us, that we're talking about fine tuning.
Well, and add to the, our access to Pierce County Skillset, and I mean, that's just. That's huge, yeah, another progress, but our robotics, the, I mean, the stuff we grew on, there, we have just unbelievable instructors.
Any other topics or closing thoughts? Good, should we call it? All right, we're adjourned.